Everyone here, we correct? Okay. So this is actually my second time presenting this plan in the last forty-five minutes, which is kind of got a practice run this morning with the rest of the rest of the schools in SU sixteen today. Every school has the opportunity to present their return to school plan, which allows time for feedback from all stakeholders in SAU. I'm sorry, all team members, I'm saying a team members because really it has been a team oriented approach to return to school from all the schools in SU sixteen. And one of the great things about being together in a building has been the time to sit down with other schools and talk about their plans and offer feedback and suggestions. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done over the last three days, but this has really taken the last month and a half since I've been on the job. And as I started, you know, this position, we didn't know where we were going. And it was a plan for all students to be back in the building. And as you all know, last Friday, and then again voted on Monday that it was moving to a remote option. So that being said, we were working on an in-person platform, but also with the knowledge of the chance going remote was was pretty high, whether it was starting in September or even moving on into the cold flu season. We knew that we needed to be ready for both. So although the plan has been worked and tweaked over the last three days, it started weeks and weeks ago. And I just wanted to highlight a few people before we get into the plan itself. Katie Young, who's on the call today, created a remote option for parents. If if we were going that route, with also the knowledge that we would be moving towards remote at some point, probably, you know, at some point. So she was, she did a lot of the groundwork from this. And then the team over the last three days has taken her part work and created a remote platform for all of our students moving forward. Our team over the last three days has been an awesome team, just a hardworking team to work with. We have a more than I grow as one of our pair of professionals. Amanda Ward was on our team. She's a third and fourth grade teacher. Sharon Norman is a three-four teacher. Matt Stevens is a one-two teacher. And Carol Miller has the fifth grade teacher. And Paige Tool, our school counselor. So we had a really great team with with different opinions, experts in different fields, and it was a really great team to work with. I my screen here. Sorry, one second. Everyone see that? Okay. So this screen, I'm sorry, this plan is is a fluid and flexible plan. And I say that because some of the feedback I received just from my presentation this morning, I called Katie and we started tweaking it just in the last, just in the last few minutes because I thought it was great information that another school presented that I thought would would be beneficial for us as an East Kingston community. So I'm just going to go through each slide. And I I just wanted to start off with saying that our teachers are as dedicated, as dedicated group of professionals that I've that I've worked with over the last twenty years. And they've worked, they've worked really hard over the last month and a half to make whatever kind of platform we were using, the platform that would work for for the students in our school. And they've, they've been throwing curveballs left and right. And and they've been knocking them out of the park like Aaron Judge, you know, like Aaron Judge does all the time through Yankee Stadium, just, you know, knocking those bad boys out of the park. So I want to thank them for all their their hard work and their dedication because it's been more than just the five or six people I talked about. I've had staff meetings with great participation and we've had leadership team meetings. So it's really been the whole staff that have worked tirelessly over their their summer to create an experience for not only our students, but a but a positive, you know, hopefully a positive experience for our parents as well as they take on the tough task of going through remote learning. Our theme, as I said a number of times, our theme this year is together is better. There's not a better time in time of a pandemic and the time of crisis to really come together as a group. And we're working together as a team, but we're really inviting our families and our community as partners to try to stay as open minded as possible. It's tough to be open minded when there's the unknown. And I can assure you that I'm feeling that unknown as a parent of an incoming kindergarten. And I say that because I want you to know, especially the parents of some of our youngest students, I want you to know that I'm thinking of your concerns and the emails, the emails that I've been getting with concerns, I'm feeling it right along with you. So please know that I'm not taking any of those, those emails or the phone calls that I've been getting, I'm not taking them and just tossing them aside. I'm living it with you, and I wanted you to know that. But we're working as a group and we're and we need to stay in that partnership because we want our students to really have growth both academically this year and emotionally because we want our students to learn as a whole child. And a lot of the emotions and the trauma that we faced over the last five months, we are prepared to to work with your students and you, supporting, supporting them both emotionally and academically. We have been working, part of our work over the last three days was really setting up in building professional development that we knew our staff needed and wanted. And the staff have been asked by me to, you know, to offer some guidance on what we feel like we need as a staff, along with what the SEU will be providing. And I wanted to highlight that our staff over those eight days have volunteered to lead their colleagues through high quality PD. And we have many, many experts in our building in many different fields. And we're going to utilize them because as someone who really value shared leadership, I don't pretend to know every single thing about our building, especially, you know, as a new person coming in, but also just in the data and operations of a K to five building. So knowing that we have an amazing group of staff members that are high quality professionals and and have depths of knowledge in areas that I may not, we're going to be using our staff to lead PD over those eight days. And I'm going to, I want to show you just, just so you get an idea on the kind of PD that that our staff. Can everyone see this this new page? Okay. So we, as we looked at what what our needs were for our building in developing a remote model, but also just knowing, even if we were in person, there are things that we needed as a staff. So our objectives, we're focusing on the health and wellness of all staff and students in the building by giving them time and resources to process recent events and understand each other's experiences. For our staff, that'll be happening on their first day back on the twenty-seventh. And then for our students, it'll be ongoing throughout the year. Another objective is agility. We wanted to be prepared to provide continuity of learning in a variety of score scenarios face to face. Hybrid shouldn't be in there. Because we will be providing some face to face instruction as well as remote learning. We wanted equity. We want to ensure educational equity across the board for all of our students, especially those furthest from opportunity. And you'll hear in this plan that we're going to be able to provide opportunities for those students. We want to leverage our technology tools to support equitable, high quality instruction and assessment in all learning environments. Our instruction, our PD is going to focus on instruction by implementing high quality competency based instruction in all learning environments. And the assessment piece, which we'll talk about in a little bit, because that's something that we're going to be working on as a district. And then, and then, and then within our building, the assessment pieces is the one area that is just going to be ongoing on how we are going to do assessment informally and formal assessments. So for those, for those eight days, just to just, I'm going to just show you the glance. On that first day, we want to have empathy training for our staff members in the building. We're going to have a virtual option as well for the students, I'm sorry, for the staff members who cannot make it into the building. We want to have team building exercises. And then, of course, there's the big staff meeting just to go over all of them, that's some bolts of reentry, of reentry and what that looks like. The, the empathy training, as we came back in July, is an admin group. Adam Rubin from two rev led us to an empty exercise. And I think it was really important for all of our, our admin coming back into the building, but also thinking of our staff coming back in. I can see just for the times that we've been together as a group of people, how important it is to be back together and to talk about what the last five months have been like for us as educators, for us as parents, for us as people. Because every single person dealt with that five months differently. And I think it's important that we all just take some time to listen to each other and to offer feedback and support in any way we can. So there will be a part of our morning that they will be focused on just learning about one another and and coming back together. On that second day, the teachers need time to set up and prepare for whether it was in person or remote learning. So that second day on August twenty-eighth is going to be geared towards just teachers getting ready to teach remotely or in person. On the thirty-first, and this is where the remote learning comes in. We feel like it's important that any of our staff, we have new staff in the building. We have staff that just need a refresher on CSO and Zoom and Google Classroom. So you'll see over those couple of days that we're going to be, that we're going to be providing any, any in-person or virtual instruction on how to utilize those resources, but also taking time in the afternoon to apply those and set up their their CSO accounts and set up their Google Classroom. So a lot of the PD is going to be not only learning, but also, I think the biggest chunk of our time is going to be really be planning and setting those of remote learning platforms up. You'll see on September fifth that there's going to be a day for competency based education, tracking and assessment. Those are going to be let out. All these are going to be led by East Kingston teachers and staff. So I just want to highlight that again, that it's, it's, it's our professionals leading this professional development. We have I Ready with a question mark in there. We are going to have I Ready training for our three pilot teachers, I Ready and Ready Math training. We have a first and second grade teacher who is going to be a pilot in Ready Math as well as a three-four teacher. And then, and then our fifth grade. So those teachers will be off somewhere else with the two consulting agencies we're using for I Ready and Ready Math. But then, you know, once again, in the afternoon, we want our teachers to take what they've learned in the morning and to apply them before your students as they begin the school year. On that third day, I'm sorry, on day six, September third, we have a PBL training where our new staff and any, any staff that really need an update are going to be learning how we do PBL at East Kingston, but also a big, a big portion of the day is going to be planning a community, a PBL project based on a community. And community is going to be the theme, knowing that our school-wide theme is together is better. Our school-wide project is going to focus on our community. And it could be, could be our community as a whole of East Kingston, but also our school community. And it's going to be up to the, the teachers and the grade level cohorts and figuring out how they want to take that PBL project and run with it. So, you know, the umbrella is going to be community. And then, you know, underneath that, it's going to be class or grade level based. On September eighth, all of our teaching staff will be going through a virtual training led by two revolutions on the defensive learning student-led conferences and peer feedback. And then on that last day of PD, we're going to have time to really sit down and talk about how we want to make our family orientation planning, which you'll find out a little bit what that means, but how we're going to make that work on, on those two days after, I'm sorry, on September tenth and eleventh. There's going to be planning for that, for those two days prior, but it's really going over as a whole staff on how we're going to make it work for us. So that's just a glance of our PD over those eight days. It's going to be a wonderful eight days. It's going to be more PD simultaneously than I've ever seen, I think our staff have ever had. But I, I think it's so important that we're all on the same page as we move, as we move into a full remote learning. Now we're getting into the, into the meat of our, into the meat of our presentation. We, we want to focus on four areas as we go forward with remote learning. Our first area is we want to create community, knowing our theme is together is better and knowing how important our, our small school community is. We wanted to create a community of learners that we know we want to help support and help each other grow. It's going to look differently, obviously remotely, but we still want to focus on community. And we're pretty confident we can, we can create that and establish a positive virtual community. Our first, our first six weeks, I would say, I would say more our first month is really going to be getting to know your students and learning about them as people, building the trust and safety and relationships that we all know we need with our students and our families, and really promoting that supportive culture of collaboration. We're going to be creating consistent structures and routines, which are going to help our students learn and build ownership and self-awareness. We know how our students need structure. We know how they need and some kind of schedule. And we know how important that is for our students to learn. And you will see with our schedule this year, it's going to be different per grade level cohort, but there's going to be set times in our schedule that all, all of our teachers are going to be using either for morning or afternoon meetings or for the lunch and recess. And it's going to look a little bit different than, than it did last year because we want to have that structure throughout the process of learning remotely. And, and I mean, there may be tweaks here and there off of that, but we want to, we want to have that similar schedule every single day for our students. A big piece that we're going to focus on really, really upfront, but also throughout the year, and we would have done this remotely or, or in person, is the big focus on social emotional learning. And it's not some fad, it's not some fad that's going to go away. This is really important for our, for our students, not only in East Kingston and New Hampshire, but this is, this is across the nation of the importance of social emotional learning. It's, it's going to be even more important because of what we're dealing with right now with COVID and, and just all the challenges we've been facing. So it's, it's going to be our top priority early on within our learning community just to, just to get over, just to get our students used to being back together again, building trust within our, within our classrooms and with our, with our peers and colleagues and, and focusing on the East Kingston learning community and relationship building. We want to, you know, through our social, through our social emotional learning, we want to develop that resiliency, empathy and a healthy mindset for growth and learning that are going to serve our students, not only now, but as they grow into young adults. And our counselor, our school counselor Paige Tool, like I said last night, that we're, it's such a luxury that she is with us full-time this year. And what an asset she is going to be, not only to our, to our staff in the building, but also, you know, once our students begin on September tenth, she's already got plans on how to make it work for all of our students. She's going to be using the Choose Love SEL curriculum as the guiding force behind her whole group instruction, which she will be providing whole group instruction to all of our students, but also within, within her job, she will be working either remotely with small groups from one-on-ones, either remotely, in-person sessions, and also spending time in our community learning centers with students who may need some, some counseling services there. So she, she's going to be all over the place and she's going to really important, she's going to be really important with supporting our teachers because we want, we want the SEL to be embedded in our curriculum, but also with that extra, that, that extra piece of it as she pushes into classrooms. Moving down to our curriculum, we will be following our K to five competencies, focusing on lifelong learning and inquiry and critical thinking. We will be having in our blocks every single day, we will be having our core reading, writing and math box. And we want our students to develop those skills to be more independent thinkers and engage with our, with our staff, with ongoing feedback loops and instruction to promote reflection and build knowledge. That would have been happening in person or remotely. That's, that's not changing. We're, we're still going to use those seven principles to guide our learning as we move forward. We want our, our voice, our student voice and choice to be important. We want to focus on those as central to our practice and, and help shape the learning opportunities to build independence and self-awareness. Our students are going to be working with their teachers and, and our support staff to really build those personalized learning goals and co-create learning pathways to promote self, I'm sorry, engagement and self-direction. Like I said earlier, the assessment piece is, is an ongoing discussion right now at the SA, at the SEU level and filtering on down to our building. But, and once again, our, our assessment is going to be meaningful. It's going to be positive and it's going to be empowering our learners with timely, relevant and actionable evidence based on the seven principles of CBE. And just looking at us as a building, we, we're going to be taking those, like I said, that first month of September, to really focus on the students' physical and emotional wellbeing and to strengthen those relationships to as, as the foundation for learning. Our assessments, formal and informal assessments, we will be designing assessments to address the individual learning needs of each student. And they will take priority in the coming school year. We envision that many of our assessments academically will begin sometime in October, after those first two or three weeks of building those relationships with our students. And we're going to, you know, we're going to measure those closer to the classroom instruction and to address learning needs. Our grading, our grading tool that we're going to be using is, is, is not, is not known yet, but we know what we're going to be creating with a focus on feedback as, as doing the best we can remotely with, you know, with our students to, to build, to rebuild from evidences of learning and teacher feedback on those evidences. So a lot more information will be coming about assessment, you know, over the next few weeks, working with our partners at the SEU and then focusing on our building. As I mentioned, we want to propose to our board that the first two days, December tenth and eleventh, are going to be focused on orientation. That's orientation for our students and our parents. And we know last year that it was just thrown at us, right? When we went on remote learning, it happened in Manchester, and it happened to you guys here in East Kingston. And the planning piece of it really wasn't there, planning for our parents on how to use technology that we were using in the school, but also for our students. So those two orientation days are going to be important for, for our parents to, to learn about remote learning expectations, about technology, about the competencies, about the role, about the roles and responsibilities of our parents and guardians, about parents' wellbeing and some of the struggles they may be facing and just keeping that online, I'm sorry, that open line of communication, really starting from day one. Our students, they'll have the opportunity either virtually or in person. And these, these, these orientation sessions are, there's going to be options for both. For the in-person, which is what we're really hoping for, we're, we're hoping that you can put a face to the name of the teacher and the student. And, and someone's on there right now that is making changes. Someone's on there making changes right now. Anyways, it's going to be a time for the face to face. And if, if the parents aren't comfortable or can I make it to any vert, to any in-person orientation session, then, then we will provide a virtual video of using technology and expectations and everything that are in-person usually are going to happen. Our remote learning platform, what it's going to look like. And this is, this has been one of those areas where we are constantly adding and subtracting and, and tweaking as we move along, you know, especially over the last few days. I think for the ease of parents, that there, there will be a set daily schedule. Like I said, there's going to be, there's going to be common times that are really untouchable. And in those times, just looking at the teacher day, the teacher day is going to be eight fifteen to three fifteen. And our student day is going to, is going to be from about a nine to two. From nine to nine fifteen every single day, every single student will be in a morning meeting with their, with their teachers. That'll be from a nine to a nine fifteen, depending on the teacher or the subject. It could be nine to nine thirty, we're going to play around that. But I would say every day at nine o'clock, your students will be beginning their day with a morning meeting. The other untouchable time in that, in that schedule is going to be in eleven thirty to twelve thirty. And during the eleven thirty to twelve thirty, that's going to be time for our, our students to take their lunch break and do some kind of outdoor activity, hopefully outdoor activity. Hopefully it's with neighborhood kids where they can go out and socialize for that, you know, for that lunch in those forty-five minutes or so after lunch. But that hour block is going to be every single day, eleven thirty to twelve thirty with that lunch and that just break time built in. And then the other time that's going to be, that's going to be happening every day is that two o'clock time for the closing meeting of the day. Within that morning meeting and the closing meeting is going to be where all of their academics and unified arts are happening. We are going to be working as a, as a grade level cohort. We are going to be working as a, as a grade level cohort to have a very similar schedule, so. Our one, two grade level teachers will be, the three of them will be working together. To create a schedule that's going to work for them as a group, but also create a schedule that's going to work for. For our youngest students. Ms. Norman, our, our K teacher will be creating her own schedule that will fit our one kindergarten class. Our third and fourth grade teachers, there's three of them as well, they will be doing the same thing, they will be creating a, a, a team schedule. And then the same thing with our two fifth grade, for many fifth grade parents, as we move forward. We're going to be taking that, that to, the two fifth grade, sorry, we were scheduled to have one fifth grade classroom with high numbers. Knowing that we were hopefully going in person, we created two fifth grade classrooms of, of smaller numbers and that really works out, especially. With the situation we're in now, so those two fifth grade teachers will be working collaboratively with. The subjects they're going to be teaching and you're going to get a lot more information on that and you also. There's going to be a homeroom teacher that we're working on class list right now, so there, there will be a homeroom teacher. But you're going to be getting quality education from both of those teachers. Materials and assignments, they're going to be prepared by our staff and we would like to distribute them on a regular basis. With a digital component, but also that the pen and paper or pencil, pencil and paper based learning. We know it's going to be important to do both and we want to offer for our students the chance to do both. Our, our plan is to develop a regular schedule. Where parents are able to, and students are able to drop off materials. And to pick up any new materials they may need, and it could be things like guided reading books or books from the classroom library or. Art materials from the art teacher, so there's going to be a system where we're going to be ordering high, high durable, highly durable plastic bags. Each student will have two of them. And on that first, our, our plan is on that first orientation day. That the students are able to meet their teacher and learn about their, their teacher, but also learn about what remote. What remote learning looks like and then take this little goodie bag with them and. We envision putting, you know, we're, we're, we're creating the, the, the class list right now depending on the grade level, but. Just, just an example would be a, a whiteboard with, with dry erase markers, pencils. A ruler, crayons. Things like that, that are, that are really basic school supplies, but each, each student would, would, would go home with them. And then depending on the schedule, the schedule and how we're going to make that work with either drop off or pickup. We're working on that now, but it's going to be a regular schedule, could be weekly, could be bi-weekly, and that's something we're, we're trying to figure out the logistics on that. But that will definitely happen and it'll give students again, you know, the chance to have that quick face-to-face with the teacher and. You know, but also to pick up any, any new learning materials. I know last year that that, that couldn't happen and as much as we wanted it to happen, it's something that couldn't happen, but we really wanted to happen for this remote learning experience. A, a big question has been the proper technology using iPads and Chromebooks. We're working on that again, don't have logistics on what, you know, if, if your child will have a Chromebook and iPad, I think we have. The majority of Chromebooks and some of our younger students will be using iPads. But we will be creating a platform for families to not only learn about using the technology, but also. If there's any issues arising with technology, which we know they were happening last year, we want to provide support for families. Whether it's, you know, some kind of Google sheet or just sign, I just sent some type of communication with our school to assist with any tech issues. Our students are going to have the opportunity to learn in multiple forums, there's going to be a large group instruction every day, so in their E L A block. And then their math block, there's going to be a large group, whole group instruction. And then after those, those blocks are done, they're going to be filtering into small groups, there's going to be opportunities for one-on-one sessions. Opportunities for self-guided learning to build their independence and we're always keeping the, the. You know, the mindset of age-appropriate work sessions and screen time. Our students online, they're, they're going to have access to synchronous, which is sitting there live with the teacher. And asynchronous, which is more of an independent learning platform, using either teacher-created lessons and or videos. Like I said earlier, our social emotional component is going to be embedded throughout our activities. As well as explicitly taught in the whole group sessions. All students under I D E A will be receiving services in one-on-one or small group setting in the school. If, if it's an option that parents want to take, as scheduled by case managers and service specialists. We're looking at not only students under I D E A, but we're also looking at creating. In-person instruction for students that might be tier two, tier two or tier three learning. Where, where they need extra support, students with possible five oh fours as well. We want to create schedules for those students to come into the building, either with their teacher, with their special education teacher. With our paraprofessionals to offer any small group or one-on-one instruction. Weather permitting, we will be doing as much as we could outside, but when the weather isn't permitting us, we would be doing it in a, in a safe environment with. Proper ventilation in, in an area with. You know, wearing masks and all the guidelines we could have been using for any in-person instruction. We will also be offering services to our students in the Community Learning Center and we're looking at our school this year as a learning center. But there's going to be a difference, there's our East Kingston Learning Center and then there's the district-wide Community Learning Centers. I, I, I want to make the distinction between the two because the Community Learning Centers, like Dr. Ryan said last week or Monday are going to be. You know, mainly for our, our full-time working parents who, who need that support. Our East Kingston Learning Center is going to be different, it's going to be using, using our building for those students under I D E A. Or our students under five oh fours or our students that, that we as a team believe need that small group in-person instruction. Or, or an instruction, but also we have time built in the schedule to create. An avenue for students that may be really stuck, and I use the example this morning on a math concept, you know, they, they're, they're stuck in their Zoom sessions with their. With their classroom teacher and they just can't grasp it and asking them to come in. For, you know, a quick work session in that two to fifteen to three fifteen block when teachers are still, still working, that might be a perfect time for. For our students to don't fall under that umbrella to come in and get that one-on-one support that they might need, so. We're using our building as a learning center, I just want to make, you know, again, the distinction between the Community Learning Center from the S A U. And our East Kingston Learning Center, they're two different, two different entities, I, I guess you could say. Our instructional designs for, for our students under I D A will continue to be supported by regularly collecting student data focusing on. Their progress monitoring and we will continue with our sped, our special education evaluations. With parents permission, hopefully in an in-person, in-person setting with the health and safety precautions in place. Over those first thirty days, any students. Who have I P's in our building, I, I sent out the last week, a week before. Some paperwork regarding competency, I'm sorry, compensatory services. And I've been totally getting them back, but we will be meeting with our, our parents, at least in that first thirty days. To offer compensatory services or to talk about them, but also to begin the conversation of, of. How we're going to make remote learning work for your student and our, our two case managers are already thinking of ways to. To make that work for our, our students under, under I D E A. And then we're also going to be building digital competency with technology and technical training and support for our students and their families. Our learning platforms, student, students will utilize their virtual platforms through a single sign-on. Seesaw will be our main platform using a portfolio of documents to document our learning. And to complete assignments and, and I think as I learned about our building, it's, it's, it's been more of a. Okay to two because of the ease of, of use for our younger students with most of their learning coming from seesaw. But also with a Google Classroom mixed in there and I believe our, their two fifth grade students. Mainly use the Google Classroom, so we're going to be utilizing both as our learning platforms, but also. Our meetings are going to be done using Zoom with, with the safety measures that Zoom will be providing to our district. And then our parents, you know, during that orientation, then throughout, just will be learning how to use those platforms. I'm sure you could probably learn more from your students or more from your children, you know, as they learn them themselves, so. That, that, that right now is, is what we will be presenting next week. At the board meeting, but I can assure you that over the next week, that there will be tweaks to this. Because of all the learning that is happening right now as I'm sitting here. The, the staff that have been working on this over the last three days, they're still in, in the east, in the Exeter High CAF. Reviewing and, and, and learning about other schools. Return to school plans and, you know, like I said, this was something that, that, that I was tweaking ten minutes before our meeting started today, so. That's, that's the gist of it right there, but more will be to come next, next Wednesday as we present it to, you know, officially to the board.
Thank you, Mr. French, J D Martinez and David Ortiz would be proud. So I want to open this up now, I just want to make sure that we have, so you'd said that there's still more work going to be done on this. Between now and next Wednesday. Where do you think, and this is my first question, where do you think more thought needs to be developed into this, into the plan?
I, I just thought, thought in my head, I, I think, I think, you know, creating a, a. Schedule that's going to work for our parents for the orientation piece of it. Whether it's in-person or virtual, you know, for the virtual, what I want to do is, is, is make a, a how-to video almost of. How to use the platforms we're going to be using, so for any parents that aren't comfortable coming in or cannot make it in over those two days. They would have access to the video for, for their orientation, but also creating a schedule on how, how we're going to make it work. So parents and students can come into the building in a safe way. If, if the weather's not permitting or doing as much as we can outside and creating outdoor spaces for our staff to meet their students, so. That's, that's definitely something that we need to, to work on more and to find tunnel orientation. I would also say, you know, just figure out the technology on. What our students have right now and what they're lacking as far as either Chromebooks or iPads and. Working with our tech department on, on making sure our students are prepared to start on, on that September. If we're looking at the dates, I mean, if orientation is a two-day, whatever the thirteenth or whatever date that is. To, to officially begin their, their remote learning. And then also, you know, I, I think so many want to know about assessments. I think just on, on, on my own, just personal dad, you know, pad on. I'm, I'm curious to know how, how, how my son is going to be. As he begins kindergarten, I mean, he's attended preschool for so long and, and, and knowing kindergarten is just a tough one from that, I'm, I'm curious to know how he's going to do. But I've also received a feedback from parents on our concerns about where their students or where their children are now. And how they're going to be assessed moving forward, so I think the assessment tools we're going to be using is going to be work in progress with, with our. S A U, but also within our building. And I'm sure more, I'm going to think of more that, that we need to find too as well.
Awesome, thank you. One question I've received from parents is regarding the schedule, and this might be more for Dr. Ryan and yourself. The schedule had teacher days built in as well as the regular schedule. Are we, are we going to keep five days a week minus holidays? Or are we still going to have teacher workshop days?
Yeah, that's a great question, the, the schedule is going to be a five-day a week learning schedule, so there, there's not going to be. Was it Wednesday last year for you guys or Friday, it's going to be a five-day schedule for our students ticking out those, those. You know, forty-eight weeks because of a holiday or something, it's going to be following the normal school schedule.
Thank you. Melissa and Jen. Feel free to unmute and ask some questions now.
I'm trying to think of questions to ask, I want to, um, yeah, just say thank you for this, it's such a well-thought-out plan to you and Katie. And Dr. Ryan and everyone who worked on this, so. It's definitely reassuring, I love the orientation plan. To get parents some support in that way. So I think and the use of outdoor space to do those one-on-one meetings, so if there's anything. I know our budget's very limited, but the P T O has stepped up and wants to help, so anything, you know, you need as far as resources. I don't know, Melissa, do you have any questions right now?
Yeah. So the, the school orientation, you mentioned that would be the first two days of school.
Yep.
Is, is some of that going to be in-person, is that way?
Yeah, we, we would love to get as many in-person meetings as we can, just, just to give our students the opportunity to meet their teacher, especially the ones. Who are moving into a different classroom, some of our students, if they went from first to second grade, have the luxury of, of possibly knowing their teacher from last year, but. I think for the students that are new to our building or, or new to our class. It's a great opportunity for them to actually get to know their teacher, for our teachers that are going to be there. And just to get to know their school and, and, and just to have that, that social interaction with, with people that are there and. And, you know, we're, we're hoping that we're going to be starting small here with these orientations and, and with these in-person. Sessions with our, our, our students in, in a small group or one-on-one session and. You know, I, I would love to say, you know, this is working so well, but let's start figuring out schedules to, to provide even more in-person instruction, so. We're really starting small in that aspect of, of the in-person, hopefully, hopefully we can build off of it, I, I know Dr. Ryan, I talked about. Taking, taking a look at our, at our school after, I forget how many days it was, sometime in October, maybe the fifteenth or something of October, just to. Just to take a look and, and, and step back and, and look at what's working and what's not working and, and what can we tweak and. And that's the kind of mindset we're going into this with is, you know, this is our first time with that, that. We're creating a plan for remote learning, last year it was thrown to us, so this is the first time we're really creating a plan. The great part has been is the teachers in East Kingston have, have, have looked back on last year and reflected on what really worked. What didn't work, what will I never do again, because it was the worst thing ever. And taken all of what they've learned from last year and really built this plan for a really positive experience for our students.
Do you have any additional information on the, not the East Kingston as a, as a community center for learning, but the external community. Centers for parents that are working or may need a place to send their child during the day. I know we have some locations that have been listed, but do we have any idea of what, what that might look like for parents?
I can, I can take that question, Brandon, Esther Aspel and Chris Andruski are working, they're meeting, actually Chris is meeting tomorrow. With not only the centers, not only the Y, but the also childcare facilities that exist in the area. Who are going to have availability as well, so they can participate as part of the Community Care Center network that we're trying to establish. It's probably going to be a week, we, I'm sorry, I have a little fruit fly flying around in here, my apologies, it's probably going to be like a week or a week and a half. Before we're going to have definitive answers on exactly what that's going to look like. One of the definites is we're going to be able to provide before and after-school care no matter what. And so that's going to be a relief, we hope for, for parents. Because the Community Care Center will operate from, at least working with the Y. In Exeter from nine to two fifteen and then we'll have our before and after care in the same center, so. Parents will essentially be able to have all-day care for their children. While, while children are also getting assistance from either paraeducators, licensed counselors from the Y. Or other employees that are being repurposed and reassigned, who typically would have worked in schools. Who will be able to work with students at those community care centers, but we're trying to work those details out. That's taken a little, a little, a little while when you consider that it was something. That's taken a little while when you consider that it was something we just began to think about a week or week and a half ago. So we'll have much more information and it'll come, it'll come pretty fast, probably about a week, week and a half. Jamie, I just want something. I've turned the chat off in a board work session. Typically, it's just the board who speaks and communicates, and it's for the public to view but not to interact. I just wanted to check with you as the chair to ensure that that's how you want this work session to.
So we can't interact.
Yes, that's the intent for right now, let the board ask their questions and depending on time and make sure that all the board questions have been answered, because this is really our time to help think of the questions that we want before we can make a vote. The real public input time is next Wednesday on the 19th.
That's what I thought. So I was just, I just wanted to politely ask everyone to subscribe to that for today so that the board can do their work. And we'll have ample time on Wednesday. We'll use the webinar function of our Zoom account, which can accommodate up to 1,000 attendees who will be able to participate at that time. So I just wanted to jump in. Sorry, Melissa, I know you have other questions.
Yeah, and if anyone has questions, feel free to send them to individual board members as well, and we'll make sure that they get addressed or questioned in there too. Thank you.
Do we have any idea yet on how that will be funded, the remote learning centers?
So the families will be responsible financially, but we're looking to try and provide assistance as best we can through our free or reduced school lunch program. So federal dollars that would be able to assist us in that. The school operating budget will not be funding the community care centers.
Okay. And are we anticipating that before and after care would be available at E KES as well or only at the outside centers?
So I think that's going to be something we have to finalize. I would think that if we're not going to be having school in person at the school, the before and after at the school might not work. However, there is some planning that can go into that, utilizing transportation to transport students from E X to a community care center and back to the after-school care. But we're going to have to work through that a little bit with a little bit more planning.
Question about, you mentioned paraprofessionals being involved with the community centers. Could you speak to that a little more, how that would work?
Sure. So we're going to be utilizing our pairs across the board, and their jobs may look a little bit different or will look a little bit different this year than in the past. And, you know, oftentimes our pairs are assigned to a classroom or a couple of classrooms. Our students have, might possibly have a one-on-one. Those students will have access to their one-on-one and will continue to have that. But our other pairs who are more assigned to classrooms, chances are that they're going to be, they're going to have a different assignment. And their assignment, if they're willing to come into the building, could be working with small groups within our building. They will be really highly focused on remote learning. And when our students go off in their breakout sessions from their whole group instruction, we will be utilizing our pairs remotely as well to work with our small groups of students in that breakout session. And depending on how many of our students are utilizing the community learning center, pairs that are willing and able to work in an individual or a small group session there may be asked to work in that community learning center, whether it's a day or a half day. However, I mean, a lot of their schedules aren't going to be known until we know what our students are going to be doing. But they're going to be utilized in all three areas, remote, community center, and then within our building.
I have a question about, I know assessments, and I know assessments is one of the future things to do. It's a couple-fold. State assessments, are we going to ask for a waiver for state assessments? I don't know if anything's coming back from the state. I can't possibly think that state assessments will be done at home.
Why? The statewide assessment is actually, right now, for grades three through eight, not going to be scheduled. What the state is asking is that interim benchmark assessments under the S A S S be conducted, so some standardized assessment that remains local and school-based for informative purposes only be done. The high school SAT, which is SAT day that we typically have in April, is going to be scheduled for October for our juniors. So our juniors living in East Kingston who are attending Exeter High School will have the opportunity to participate in that. How we're doing that logistically is still being worked up, and that's what every school district's trying to do across the state, working with the commissioner.
Awesome, thank you. So more locally, we need to make sure that we know what the grading is going to be. I know when we said no grades last year, that that meant little or no more accountability, which really didn't work for my kids specifically, who said, well, what am I getting for it? So I think if we set with grades, or not even grades, the competency is educated, you know, the report card needs to exist. So I want to try and make sure that we have that there. I know it's competency-based for K through 12, K through two, and maybe, who knows, if it'll be up to three through five by then. But I encourage grading to stay, to be an important part, but also to allow the equity amongst the grading and knowing that the students are coming from different areas and have the different supports. And some of these children will be on a bus for more time than a kid will be in front of the computer. Also, attendance, I want to make sure that we're thinking about attendance. And what that means, does a person at nine o'clock, does that count as attendance? Do they participate the full day? Whether that is, you know, whether they participate after three o'clock in the afternoon, does that still count towards attendance? I want to think about that. I also want some contingencies for teacher plans. So for instance, you said we have one kindergarten teacher, and heaven forbid, something goes wrong. I want to make sure that there's a backup for her. I know that K one and two and three and four have multiple teachers as five, but I want to make sure that kindergarten is supported. So that was my, those are my things right there, based on the conversation. I do have more questions, but I want to give more time for Jen and Melissa as well to pop in.
I have a question about the platform. You mentioned Seesaw. Are there going to be other, you know, what sort of, are we using Zoom again or Google Classroom?
Yes, so we're going to be asking our teachers to conduct every, every meeting they have, either with their students in a ELA block or students, you know, if there's an IEP meeting, we want everyone to utilize Zoom. And Dr. Ryan, you can speak on this. The, we're working on getting a Zoom, a safer Zoom platform, correct, that we can hold all our meetings under?
That's correct. We're actually, we've met with Zoom today through an account rep. The state is also having a statewide call tomorrow relative to the Zoom platform, and the state is looking to assist school districts around the state with the cost of licenses that are the paid licenses, which carry a greater level of security than in the free accounts. So there would be a higher level and certainly an upgrade in the quality and the security of our Zoom platform going into this year.
Thank you. So yes, we're going to be utilizing Zoom pretty much every day.
We need to make sure we like to settle.
Got it. Thank you. And also a Seesaw and Google Classroom. Feedback I've already heard from parents, there were too many different avenues that we were using last year. So we want to streamline that into utilizing Seesaw for, at least for our K to twos, but also utilizing Seesaw for our three to five as an evidence and portfolio building to demonstrate their learning. But so many of us are familiar with Google Classroom and how that works, that those are the three areas or three platforms, I should say, that we're going to be using almost on a daily basis.
I want to make sure that E K S plans take into account reading buddies and fifth-grade meetings, student-led meetings, see if that's a possibility to continue. I know we're trying to develop our fifth graders as leaders, and I know third graders look forward to being reading buddies for the first time.
You said reading buddies in fifth grade?
Fifth grade morning meeting leaders.
Okay. Well, as you guys have learned about me, as I've taken this position, you and everyone, I talk about all the time about my belief in leadership and building leaders from our youngest students right up through our fifth graders. And that's something that I'm personally trying to figure out on how we can utilize all of our leaders. And it's something that we can talk about as a staff on how to give leadership opportunities to our students. So that's definitely something that I'm on the same page with you about.
Another thing would be making sure that, well, the option to borrow a desk or borrow some sort of supplies from the school. I know we've seen a lot of people looking at having to purchase things or make their own, but if that is an option we can look at to help make the transition to out of school as seamlessly as possible. I know last year when we had shut down, we didn't know that we couldn't touch things or we could touch things. So that was one of the main reasons why the schools were never reopened up. So I want to just look at that if we can.
Sure. I can tell you that part of that orientation over those first two days and then a continuation off of that is making sure our students are building their own little workspace and their own little office, because if they're laying on the couch or laying in bed, we know learning's not going to happen. So it's going to be recommended to our families during those days that, and we can talk about how to create that workspace with all their tools there that they need every single day like they already have, whether it's having a caddy or a little bag with all their other tools in it. So that'll be part of the conversations with those students and families during the orientation.
Brandon, have we given any thought into how we want to allocate those resources? I know we said, you know, we can send every kid home with a Chromebook and a bag of supplies and, you know, maybe a desk or something if they needed it. Have we thought about that there may be kids that don't need their Chromebook, kids that won't need the supplies? I just want to make sure we're allocating the resources where they need to go. I mean, there's going to be some people that need more than others. I just want to make sure that if, you know, we have students that weren't even using their Chromebooks last semester, that, you know, maybe if they're not using them, you know, we can allocate them to kids that need them.
I can, I mean, probably the best way to do that is sending out, you know, which I hate to do, but another parent survey, to see what technology they have that's at school, a technology that either they don't need or even is broken and not working. So that's going to be something we're going to have to figure out. And I guess sending us some type of survey would probably be the best way to do that, unless you guys can think of something better. But I agree with you. I think there's going to be families that might need a little bit more because they have multiple students in the school. And I know we ran into that problem last year with, with our students in Manchester is multi-child families needed a little bit more. So I think that's a great recommendation.
Yeah, I think there's going to be people, I don't know, the first thing I noticed was we needed a new router. If we had all of us on a Zoom call at the same time, it was the furthest one away from the router that was going to get booted every time. So I just want to make sure we're kind of thinking about all the things that parents might need.
Okay.
As well as the information about their internet access, make sure that we're passed locally as well. I know the SAU has sent that out, but just another, it might have changed since it was last asked.
Sure.
I have a question for Dr. Ryan. Is there any sort of sense that we're going to keep, I know at this point the school grounds are open to the public, the fields and the playgrounds, is that going to, is that going to stay the same until there's, you know, until something else changes?
It is, yeah. What we're trying to have folks understand throughout the SAU is we're not shuttering our buildings and locking up our campuses because we know so much more now than we did in the spring. So the use and whether it be out in the field or working out of the playground or the building is still very much open for creative use, right? Wanting to ensure that we have our health and safety guidelines in place. But, you know, as I've shared with the team with East Kingston, of East Kingston is, you know, thinking about our building as a learning and counseling center and repurposing that building. So it is getting used, but it's being used in a very thoughtful, safe way. So all of the students coming back into the building with teachers at the same time would not fit into that category, but certainly small groups of students, one-on-one, inside and outside, utilizing outside as much as possible, which includes utilizing the field and the playground. That's all going to remain open unless we get an order that says shut everything down. I know that the governor just changed an order to mask gatherings of 100 or more, wear masks. That doesn't necessarily apply to what we're talking about with our remote learning, but should there be something more strict coming down, we'll certainly impose it.
I have another question for Brandon in regards to the open positions and the budget. Are there, I know we have several open positions, including librarian and the lunch program. Have you given any thought to which ones of these we will not need, given will be remote?
Yes, I, so right now, we have, we have hired, we have interviewed a one-to-long-term sub, a position for Ms. Goshan, and she is a wonderful person. We, I just have to do the paperwork as of yesterday. I spoke to her yesterday, and I'm going to be speaking to her references sometime this afternoon or definitely by tomorrow, and then fill out the paperwork for HR. She's a wonderful person with a whole four months or whatever she had last year of remote learning experience in a first-grade classroom of 25 kids with no parent. So she's, she knows what she's doing, and we're really confident in her abilities. And I'm also going to be making another phone call today because we really think that academic tutor is going to be really important this year, and we want to utilize him or her. And she's someone that can do things in person. That's what we really want to focus on if she's willing to come into the building and provide that in-person instruction is going to be definitely a benefit for our students. And then the librarian, we haven't had one certified library media specialist apply for it. However, speaking to a woman on Monday who has already reached out to the DOE for the alternate library certification, she is certified elementary ed, and she's got a reading certificate as well. But she is someone who is definitely interested in moving forward with that alternate cert. So I think those three positions are definitely three we need to fill. We're also looking for a long-term sub for art and the certification for a part-time position in art. Haven't had any applicants that are certified with that position. So that's something that we're going to need to figure out on how we're going to move forward with that, either opening in their schedule or if that person is not, if we don't have anyone for that position, we're going to have to be creative with that. The kitchen manager is one that we have not hired, and I don't anticipate needing to hire at this time because of, because of going remotely. I spoke with the principal at Kensington yesterday about setting up a meeting with that board, our food services director that we're sharing, to figure out how we're going to make that work for our students that still need, that still need the school lunch and/or breakfast. So I think the one area, like I said, is the kitchen manager. So I think the one area, like I said, is the kitchen manager, we're not going to need it this time. And with the other three positions, I think are definitely something we, we need.
One thing that goes hand in hand with parent orientation is having a parent landing page. I want, I want the school to think long and hard about how much communication parents have received from March to May and June. How overwhelming parents were and have a landing page for all online communications for parents. We also got many several meeting change notes and meeting, you know, Zoom link changes last minute. So I would highly encourage, make sure that training is done on, on how to notify parents correctly on. I've seen individual advice go out and I've seen like a Google sheet that updated the link right in there. And just the amount of information parents got last year was overwhelming as a parent of three. It was threefold. So just make a landing page for the facts and all the different information that for this online. I want to make sure that the district is definitely thinking about making sure that children are not behind screens for the entire day. That the plan, even though it says, you know, it's a nine o'clock start, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be a nine o'clock start in front of the computer. Type, type of mentality, I'm just using that as an example. That we identify how much screen time is appropriate for different ages and set that as an expectation. Because I know a lot of parents that we've, we've had questions from, my child can't sit for seven hours on Zoom. I don't think that was what I heard today, but I just want to make sure that that question is coming out loud and loud and strong. And it's not what it was in March.
Yeah, that's definitely not going to happen that way. So I, it's going to be, it's going to be age appropriate screen time. With, with our, our primary students with the least amount of screen time and then building off of that. So I can assure you that our teachers are fully understanding of that and they're going to create their schedules with that knowledge. That there is going to be whole group instruction and then the breakout sessions off of that. But it's going to have to be also individualized and personalized learning. So that's, it's, it's going to be the whole, whole gamut there.
And then piggybacking off of that, maybe something the district should think about too is ergonomics for both teachers and students who are recreating their work environments. Ergonomics, does I say economics, ergonomics? To, to figure out, you know, what is appropriate? And, you know, the reason why kindergarten exists is because we use the word can, you know, child. And not handing them their, you know, an adult pair of scissors, you know, that type of mentality too for elementary school. Melissa, do you, do you have more right now?
Yeah, I had another question, Brandon, I'm not sure if you have this number, but I was just wondering what our current enrollment number was. We hadn't really seen anything on a number of, we used to get kind of a monthly update on enrollment numbers, grade by grade. And I hadn't seen how many incoming K students we had since April or May, I think. So I'm not sure I have a final number. And tied with that, I was also wondering if we have at this point, do we know if we've lost any students to other platforms, homeschooling, V-Lax or private school? I didn't know if.
Sure, just to get to the enrollment, is, is that something you would like me to include on my principal's report every month of our current, okay?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Yep, I know right now we have 128 students as of last, let's see, Monday when I was at school. 128 students with 12 incoming kindergartners. And as of, as of Monday, we know we have, we have had two parents. And I forget which grade levels off the top of my head, but we've had two, two parents who have said that their students are not going to be coming because they're either going to be V-Lax or homeschool.
Okay, thank you.
And more plans for parent check-ins. I know we did one phone call last year, but I think the amount of help needed for parents to support whatever model we're going through. So whether that be, I know we've did some stuff over the summer for parent check-ins through the CMS and EHS. But for elementary level too, I think not to add to the parents' plates, but to give them an option to have a chat together. To maybe led by a counselor, maybe some, my child's going through this, you know, some options for check-ins with still kept school counselor for their social emotional needs of the students and the parents.
Sure, yeah, so it'll be one of the luxuries that we have this year of, of being able to come into the building will be those times where, you know, either the drop-off pickup material time will be a great opportunity for, for parents to check in with either the counselor or the classroom teacher. But also this year, one of the luxuries of going remote, you know, for trying to find, you know, the positives in, in this situation. I think one of the biggest luxuries we're going to have is all of the time our, our teachers are going to have for planning and prep. But also a professional development, they're going to have their eight fifteen to nine every single day, where it's going to be common prep time. They're going to have the time during their unified arts blocks. And then also that two fifteen to three fifteen to either have staff meetings or their PLCs. Or any, 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 any team time that they need. So there's going to be a lot of time for them to, to really take time to make those connections with parents during those three areas. But also during that drop-off and pickup time is going to be, in my opinion, one of the best options for parents to just get that face-to-face with either Mrs. Miss Tool, our guides, or sorry, we're calling her school counselor, I'm Miss Tool, our school counselor. Or any other, any other staff members, whether it's case managers or me, could be me, right? So anyone is available.
Thank you. How about Jen, do you have any things?
Um, I know we've gotten some questions from, and you touched on this a little bit, I think, but with parents with multiple kids in the school and how that will work with the, the schedule with trying to get kids on all at the same time. Is there, I know we want to do, have attendance and a structure. Or if they're in the community centers, then they may not be able to complete that work during that specific time. How, I don't know, I guess I'm just curious about the flexibility with that and how that will work.
Are you talking flexibility with schedules? I was a little confused then, could you just?
Yeah, like I know it's a, it can be a burden with, with families that have multiple kids in the school with trying to get them all on a call at exactly the same time or?
Yeah. So within our, within our teams, our plan right now for scheduling purposes is for our, our K, there's only one K class, but our K team to be on their own schedule and create a schedule for our one-two team. So our, our three teachers are following a similar schedule.
Gotcha.
Same thing with our three fours and then our, and then our two fifths. So within those teams, they're going to be creating common, common time for their whole group instruction, common time for their breakout session. So we know that that's going to be difficult for parents to navigate that if they have multiple students in, in the, in the house. But I don't see any other way to, to make it easier on, on our parents with the scheduling, you know, than having similar, similar schedules at, at least for the, the grade level cohorts.
Yeah, and I would echo just kind of building on what Jamie was saying about having a parent landing page or regular check-ins. I think just so we all feel like we're, I know that was, and it was totally different situation in March, but just having like, okay, this is what our plan is for the, the week. So that we, yeah. Oh, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but will teachers be going into the classrooms to be conducting these Zooms or rotating? I know you're talking about doing some one-on-one meetings and things like that, how will that work with their schedule?
So, so teachers are going to have, teachers are going to have the option of teaching from their classrooms and, or, or from home. Many teachers last year in East Kingston, but also in my time in Manchester begged to be in their classrooms because all of their teaching tools were there. So they're going to have that option of going into the classroom to teach. For those teachers that, that cannot go into the classroom to teach, they're going to be doing everything remotely. But they're going to have access to everything in their classroom to come and get it whenever they need to. They're going to be setting up teaching stations at home to resemble as much as they can in their classroom, knowing that they have the opportunities to go back and forth. To grab anything they need for the next day's lesson or the next week's lesson. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Melissa.
I had a question about, we don't, obviously as an elementary school, don't have a lot of extracurricular outside things. I'm sure the enrichment program that the PTO runs, that would be pretty difficult right now. What about other things like the cross-country program that usually runs in the fall? Has there been any consideration of that?
I mean, for me, that hasn't even been.
Oh, Chris has a.
If I may, I can answer that question. Right now, we're still waiting on the NHIA, what the high school's going to do as far as cross-country football, whatever. Everyone has talked about it as far as the schools that participate, we would love to do it. But you've, you've seen those, it's a Chinese fire drill times 10,000. I don't think it'll be safe. If we do get the okay from the NHIA that we can run cross-country in the high school level. We are certainly planning on trying to do something at the elementary level, whether it's just running your course at, at school and then turning in your time, something like that. So there has been discussion on the cross-country folks. And I hope that answers your question, Melissa.
Thank you.
I can add to that too, Chris, looking at the cross-country format, there'd be very difficult to have multi-team meets as we've done in the past, particularly at the high school level, when you have 35 schools send their seven best runners to Dairy Field Park. And not only the running part, but congregation of parents and fans is highly problematic. Stratum in last night's meeting will not be conducting their, their cross-country program because of the congregation issue. And so we're going to continue to look at the high school level, how we can offer cross-country in a limited format. So as Chris suggested, either running your own, your own course, running in heats, using times, right? It does create less of a competitive edge because there's definitely a competitive strategy when you're running with other people around you. But it would be availability to at least have a program. So as we get closer to that, we'll get back to this board as well as try and get Stratum to reconsider.
I know Newmarket has already, has already dropped out as well. So they will not be doing it as well. I haven't heard from the two other schools outside our district, so.
I have a question about, I'm sorry, was that, did that answer your question, Melissa?
Yeah, I'll set, thank you.
About health and safety protocols, since we will be having some, you know, this, the orientation and then possibly some other small groups and one-on-one. And is there a plan for, or, you know, when we were originally going to go back, we were talking about temperature checks and things like that. What are the protocols for those situations with?
If I could talk about the orientation first, that's one of the things I said that, you know, that we're going to work on logistics of the times of, you know, if it's alphabetically or dumb grade level, we're, we're working on the logistics of that. And if, if the weather's not preventing, we're going to have to do them inside. And so we envision any kind of in-person instruction or anytime people in the building to make sure we're following, following all the protocol of wearing masks for everyone in the building, social distancing guidelines. If it's, if it's, if it's outdoor, you know, we, we can still follow those guidelines and maybe remove the mask. And that's why, you know, the outdoors is so important because of, of the fresh air. But I, I, I can't say too much about the orientation yet because that's in the ongoing stages of, of planning that and just the logistics behind it. But anytime we're in the building, we will be following all the, the safety guidelines of the temperature check. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, Dr. Ryan, if, if we want to, because of small groups, we could possibly take them at school if we had the thermometers or still kind of parents to make sure that they're taking them before entering, I don't know.
Yeah, so one of the guidelines that we've received from the CDC remains that having parents and students screened at home and not come if not well. But staff coming into the building should be screened at the building. That's what our Department of Public Health would like us to do. So that can include a temperature check, temperature checks are actually starting to, we're starting to move away from temperature checks as part of the screening process. It's really more about your symptoms and where you are on the questionnaire, just like we've had all of the people who've been working here for the last three days. They're screened as they enter, we do still take their temperature. Right now, it's making everybody feel better that we're taking temperatures. But it's, it's probably something we should do, Brandon, regarding screening and daily screening. And then I know Karen will love to hear this, but anybody who's entering the building should probably be stopped at the vestibule and have that screening taken care of, which is exactly what we're doing at the SAU. Any visitors coming in must have already been pre-scheduled with somebody that they're going to see. They have to be screened, their temperature is taken and they must be wearing a mask. If not, we give them a disposable mask. Anybody does a drop-in, you know, we're like Larry David, we really don't like the drop-ins. So it's just too unsafe. So that's, I think, how we should handle that.
So I, so I would just use the screening form that we've been using here. And do you think we should have anyone entering sign, sign the form?
No, because you don't want anything identifiable.
Okay.
Yeah, we start getting into HIPAA issues at that.
Okay.
Is, is that like, because I know like when I've gone, you know, to the doctor, eye doctor or something, they ask, you know, if you've been traveling out of state, is it that kind of questionnaire?
Yes.
Yes, as a matter of fact. I forced you off the share, Brandon, I can grab that questionnaire and put it up on the screen if that'll help you feel a little better, Jen. Do you want me to show it to you?
That's okay, I can see it later.
Okay, I'll send it out to you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
I just want to be conscious of the time here, we had scheduled till about 11:30. And I, I know Dr. Ryan is super busy and thank you for being here today. I want to also encourage the, the school to think about community events. I know we lost things like math nights, reading nights, these types of enrichment activities that really help the students in their, in the parents. I know we learned a lot about how our students learned last year by seeing them firsthand. But those nights were always really well-attended by our local community. I want to make sure that we are staying within our budget to make sure that, I know that we're not guaranteed any money from the state or any federal money. That, that, that's all wishful thinking, but we have a budget, we have a, a default budget that we have to work with, make sure that everything fits within that. And I would also like to thank all of the teachers that have been out in all of these meetings. I see no fewer than 15 of them on right now, teachers, staff. Thank you for doing stuff when you don't have to do, and it's much appreciated. So one more final question for any of the board members. And then just a reminder that you can email any of the board members or Mr. French, if you have a personal, how is this going to work with my students? Type of, type of question, he won't be able to answer that until the plan has been finalized, but that'll help guide his question, you know, build it into his plan, you know, his thinking. So Jen and Melissa?
I'm all set.
Awesome. So I appreciate everyone coming tonight, today, oh my goodness. Today, at a time when it's probably not convenient for, for you to be here and definitely not required. That you care enough about how this plan and how this community is going to be working together to help the benefit of all of the students. We all know that the, the strong student benefits, benefits. the benefit of all of the students. We all know that the, the strong student benefits benefit the community in the long run. So I, I appreciate everyone who's been here and been here through the process. And I ask you to send emails or call. All of our numbers are on, on the SEU 16 page as well. And also invite you next Wednesday night, 5:30 afternoon, Wednesday afternoon, 5:30 to come in to hear the final deliberation and then you can ask some, some poignant questions then. So thank you very much. And I make a motion to end this meeting at 11:30 AM.
Again, are we voting?
You don't need to vote on the ending. So thank, thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Thank you, Mr. French. Thank you, all teachers and staff.
Thank you.